It was the update.
Yep.
I haven't had mine yet, but I know it's coming.
Somebody at church came up and asked me and said that we were.
We've got a post.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're ready. Okay, we'll call to order the city council meeting of, what is today? February twentieth?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth for February the nineteenth. If you would call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Sid Porter?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Rob Clark?
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two will be our consent docket. Make a motion to approve the consent docket, items A and B.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item three is Consider Ordinance Number 106225, amending Part Nine, Chapter Fifteen, Home Occupations of the City Moore Code by adding dog, cat, daycare, and boarding as an allowed home occupation, establishing a limit of nine animals on the premises at any given time, and establishing the Board of Adjustment to hear appeals to home occupation decisions by the Community Development Director with a two-hundred-foot notification radius.
Mayor and Council, this proposed ordinance makes changes to the home occupation regulations to specifically address doggy daycares. This ordinance would give a limit of nine dogs or cats at any residence at any given time, and that would include their own animals that they have there, which they are allowed to have up to four, so additional five if they have the four. It would also limit the hours of pickups and drop-offs from, to seven AM, from seven AM to seven PM, as well as moving the appeal of a decision by the Community Development Director to the Board of Adjustment. It would also establish a two-hundred-feet notification radius around the property in which the home occupation is taking place. That would allow for a more formalized process to happen where citizens can be heard. A staff report would be prepared, and the board could make decisions that would include conditions placed on the owners, et cetera. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So is there a reason why we changed it to two-hundred foot? In most of the notifications, three-hundred?
Most of the notifications is three-hundred foot, however, this would not be an appeal to the zoning ordinance. So they would not have to do a newspaper publication or a property posting, and we really wanted to limit the people who would be able to be notified to the immediate neighbors around them.
Good enough. Thank you. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I'd like to, uh, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I'm kind of slow on this one. First question I wanted to ask, is this an approved-in-home business? It's not as of right now, right?
So this, to answer your question, the way we interpret the home occupation ordinance, the answer is yes. You can have a doggy daycare as long as, you know, it does not generate complaints from neighbors. I think that the purpose of this ordinance was to tighten that up a bit, to make sure that we don't have an excessive amount of animals on a piece of property.
Put a number on it.
Right, and give a few more restrictions and guidelines as, you know, so people don't go too, you know, far the other direction.
I just have the quest, the question that I keep, keeps coming to my mind is, is maintaining the integrity of a residential area. I just, I just have a hard time with someone being able to have nine animals on their property inside a residential area. Some people come to the resident, you know, the inside-city limits like that for a reason. So I'm just, I'm just struggling with the idea of being able to have nine.
Right, so this is a number that, you know, we came up with that we felt limits the number, yet still allows people to have a business there. But you can come up with another number if you like. There's probably nothing special about nine.
Right.
Just understanding that, you know, the citizens for their own personal animals can have four if we wanted to allow them to have a doggy or cat. I mean, I put cat because you just never know. We never knew about doggy daycares either. You know, you would want some kind of additional animals allowed besides the four. I will say that these are all viewed on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, there's probably, to be quite honest, a lot of businesses out there that we have no idea are in operation. The only time we would ever get involved or even notified is if there was a problem.
It's predominantly based on a complaint basis.
It's a complaint basis only. So even if the nine were approved, of course, we would always work the complaints that came in. So if they were, you know, tilting the neighborhood into a more commercialized direction, you know, that would generate, I would assume, complaints, and then we could go work those.
Noise. There would be a number of triggers that could potentially...
Noise, smell, traffic.
Cause a problem.
Yeah.
And so could, if you investigated those and found that they were valid, then you could revoke the license for the doggy daycare?
Yeah, so they don't have a license at the moment, and we weren't really contemplating one right now. But if we did do an investigation and found that there was credence to the, you know, whether it's noise, smell, traffic, the city, through the Community Development Director, does have the option to tell them that they are no longer allowed to have that business there. And then, of course, they can appeal that to whichever, you know, board there is. And if this ordinance were to pass, that board would be the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
Today, it is City Council.
Okay.
I do have a comment. On part of this, I like the part on the Board of Adjustment to hear the appeals and things. I'm kind of like Councilman Clark. I just think almost nine is too many. We're setting the number. And I know it goes by complaints and stuff, but I just feel a lot of times that the citizens, what I look at, want me to set something, so they don't have to mess with that. Because if you didn't have any dogs, and you don't have to have a permit, there's no training, I could go to my house and tomorrow open up nine dogs coming in my backyard and barking, and then that's going to cause work. Someone calls, somebody's got to come out. And I just think it's creating a lot of work with that many animals. And it's just hard to keep up on that. And I wouldn't want nine dogs barking. I know then you can call Animal Welfare. Then we get into another thing. Nine dogs will make more noise than four dogs. And you're thinking nine's not enough, right?
No, I'm thinking nine's...
Too many?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I even had the question of, do we want to even do it? I mean, that was my idea of the doggy daycare, just having an ex... Maybe, maybe the word's not excessive, but a larger amount of dogs in a residential area. I just, I see a potential to have a lot of headaches.
The council members are able to propose an amendment to the number if you want.
I'm more than happy to withdraw my motion, so.
Okay, well then, we'll go ahead and have the, show the motion as being withdrawn. Does anybody want to make any amendment to this?
Or do we have to vote on it because we made the motion?
There was a motion and a second.
Yeah.
So can I withdraw my motion? Would she, would you withdraw your second, just so we can have the conversation?
I...
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
Kathy.
I can, I can withdraw my second.
Do we, do we need to vote on this?
Mayor, I think that one of the council members may offer a number replacing nine, and then the council would vote to whether or not to accept that amendment or not.
All right.
Probably most people would have a dog or two if they were going to do this. But, I mean, I think five, because I'm trying to look at if they have one dog and bring four others in. That's kind of like having four of your own or whatever, but it still stipulates that. And the hours of seven AM to seven PM are in there, correct?
Yes, that's for drop-off and pickup.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I make a motion to amend it to five?
Second?
Is that...
Yeah, that's why we can do a vote now.
So now we just, we're voting on the amendment?
Yes. Did, before we do that, did this come up as a result of the discussion we had a month or so ago?
Yes, yes.
Now, would this impact her?
Well, I don't think so. I think that the city council, based on the evidence that was provided at that meeting, allowed that particular person to have no more than ten.
Okay.
And so she's operating, and we're not receiving any complaints. And I don't feel like that impacts her based on this ordinance.
So this would be from this, this point forward?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the item three, the number from nine to five, and we've had a second, so we're going to vote on that. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, the amendment carries. Now, is it necessary for me to read this whole thing again? Brian, with the amended?
No, because it would, you know, you had a motion.
Okay, so now we just need a motion and a second to, to vote on the amended?
Amended ordinance.
Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Which is five. Okay, so we had a motion from Sid. Second. And a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item four is Consider Authorizing the Budgeted Purchase of Body Camera Storage in an Amount of $29,932 from Davenport Group, utilizing State Contract Number SW1020D.
Mayor and Council, this is for hard drives for the body camera storage. About two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty terabytes of hard drive space. And then we double that for a backup, for backup purposes, so all that body camera storage is backed up on-site.
And that's on-prem?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item five is Consider Authorizing the Budgeted Purchase of ten Harris XL-185M mobile radios and twenty-four Harris XL-95 portable radios from L3 Harris in an amount of $134,095.81, using Sourcewell Contract Number 042021-L3H.
Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of replacing our 2006 model Motorola radios that are well beyond their life expectancy.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Or passes. Item six is Consider Authorizing the Budgeted Purchase of twenty-four patrol ballistic vests to include LEV-two panels, concealed carriers, and soft trauma plates in an amount of $24,112.80 from special ops uniforms, using State Contract Number SW764.
Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted yearly item replacing body armor for officers that has gone past its five-year warranty. We'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item seven is Consider Ordinance Number 106025, amending Part Nine, License and Business Regulations, Chapter Twelve, Massage Parlors and Health Spas, Article V, Licenses and Permits of the City of Moore Code by amending items needed for application process for business license, therapist's license, and eliminating special or separate licenses for off-site and seated massage licenses, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance amends the items that are needed for the application process for our business licenses and our therapist licenses. Some of the items that are being removed are simply outdated. I mean, one of the license requirements is a two-inch-by-two-inch photograph, and that's something that we no longer do. It's now done online. We also removed the off-site massage and the seated massage licenses because the requirements on those were that they simply had a massage therapist's license and then the procedure to go about doing a seated massage. Really, the license requirement is just the basic massage therapist's license anyway. So we removed those items since it really wasn't a separate item as well. Some of the other items is written proof of the applicant is eighteen years of age. I just changed that to a copy of their state-issued driver's license, which would show what their age is, and also their height, weight, color of hair and eyes. That would also be indicated on their driver's license. So we just cleaned it up a little bit and just made it up to date.
Nothing in this changes any, adds any more training or takes away any more training or location?
It does not. I mean, they still have to have the state license as well, so, yeah, there's nothing like that. It would just help in our city clerk's office with the licensing process. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve? All right.
Second.
And a second. Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item eight is Consider Ordinance Number 106125, amending Part Nine, License and Business Regulations, Chapter Fourteen, Tattooing, Body Piercing, and Medical Micropigmentation of the Moore City Code by removing the prohibition of tattoo operators within a thousand feet of a school, church, or playground, and by amending items needed for the operator and the artist's licensing, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance also removes the prohibition of a tattoo establishment within a thousand feet of a school, church, playground, updates other items. For example, when reading this ordinance initially, there was a, Section Nine dash fourteen thirteen just simply had "application." It was unclear as to whether the application was for an operator license or an artist's license. And I think that should be, have a separation there. I mean, I could have an operator license and operate the establishment and then have my employees be the artists. I would be able to do that. The way that was written currently, there was confusion as to what type of a license we were giving. So on Section Nine fourteen thirteen, I kind of added, like, for example, under B, the type of ownership of the business, that would be applicable for an operator license application, not necessarily an artist's license. The, under A, the State Department of Health still has to issue the appropriate category of whatever license they have. And again, here, I also removed the two-inch-by-two-inch photo requirement and just changed it to a copy of their state-issued driver's license. And added for the operator license under Nine dash fourteen fourteen, added an operator license for one of those four requirements under that as well. Those are the only changes to this.
So talk to me about the thousand-foot rule.
That is something that was discussed in the court cases, and that has been ruled to be not allowed. So we're not allowed to have that anymore. So that's why that has been removed. We're updating that as well. That is it.
What, what about move, with moving it, change that where they can't have it within a thousand feet of a school, church, or playground? What's the reason for that?
That was a, that was a court case. That was, he just asked.
That's what the court case is about?
Yes. It was an Oklahoma City case.
Judge, it wasn't legal, so.
Yes, we were not allowed to have that prohibition.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, we need a motion. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. And thanks, Brian, for going through a lot of these municipal codes and ordinances and just cleaning stuff up. And item nine, I believe that there's a, the city staffs asked that we table this.
Well, actually, Mayor and Council, one particular section of it. So, Section Six dash one-twelve of the fee schedule, a couple of the council members have had a question about that. And so if, if the council desires to table Six dash one-twelve, that'll give staff a chance to have some further discussions with the council to address any concerns, but then the rest of it, the rest of it could pass if council chooses to do that.
So we need to amend it if we're going to do that?
So if, if, if the...
Motion to table that?
Six dash one-twelve.
Where's that at?
Or, or I could present the fee schedule changes, and then if council wishes to not make that one change, it'd be similar to what we did with, with the doggy daycare. We can make an amendment and say we're going to keep the fee at forty-nine dollars for Six dash one-twelve and adopt all the other changes. If you want to do it that way, I could present it and then...
I would rather talk, I'd rather pull this, because I believe this needs more discussion.
Okay, let's just, okay, table, let's table the whole thing and then come back when we're ready to present what we want.
Sure.
Okay. Questions?
Make a motion. We table item nine?
Second.
Okay, had a motion and a second to table item nine and would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item's tabled. Item ten?
I believe we need to table that, too.
That is correct. Okay.
Make a motion. We table item ten?
Second.
Sorry. Had a motion and a second to table item ten. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item's tabled. Item eleven, Consider Ordinance Number 106325, amending Part Four, Chapter Four, Article Four dash One D, Section Four dash One Four Five of the Moore Municipal Code by amending Section Four dash One Four Five by requiring surrender of all animals in the possession of the individual at the time of plea or finding of guilt for a violation of any provision of Part Four, Article Four dash One D, provided for severability and for repealer.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance may look very familiar, because this is the exact same one we had at the last meeting. Got back to the office, and I kind of proofread this further, and we left out a section in Paragraph Two. I kind of left an opening where an individual could go to trial and be given a deferred sentence, which would mean it would not be at a time of plea or conviction. So we, I removed the word conviction and added "or a finding of guilt." So that would be the equivalent of going to trial, being found guilty, but then given a deferred sentence. So that would put this defendant under the prohibition of Section Two. So that is what we are doing. I've just correcting a, I proofread it. It needs to be corrected from last time.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote, please.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item twelve is Consider Awarding Bid Number 2025-007, Public Works Mowing Contract to Green Shade Trees, Inc., in an Amount of $271,890.
Mayor and Council, on January thirtieth, we received four bids for mowing fifty separate locations within the city that are right-of-way and easements that the city is responsible for maintaining. The lowest responsive bidder was Green Shade Trees. And the, the term of the contract is, typically, we had had one-year contracts or, or three-year contracts was the last one. The term of this contract is a five-year contract, reviewed and approved by council every year. And then there are an additional five one-year terms that could be looked at after the, after the five-year term. Checking the references for the lowest responsive bidder, Green Shade Tree, the response was from Oklahoma City, Edmund, Deer Creek. They were very responsive comments, like, good project managers, well-staffed, well-funded. So based on that, we would recommend award of the contract.
So will we review the two-seventy-one, eight-ninety each year, or will that stay consistent for five years?
No, the way, the way that, in the contract, the way that is set up is very similar to what we do with Silver Star Construction. It will be reviewed for labor and fuel and materials and can increase with both parties agreeing. And it cannot exceed the CPI for the southern area.
Does this do any of the drainage, the creeks, or is this primarily other right-of-ways along the roadway?
It's primarily along the road, but there's a, there's a couple that are along some, the road and drainage.
Okay.
So are there requirements for how often?
Yes, the, the mowing contract is set up for the mowing season for every two weeks from April first through November first. That is sixteen mowings. The last couple of years, we've had a couple of extra mowings because of wet season. The grass grew a little quicker, or... And so this is based, this award is based on eighteen mowings, but it's a unit price per single mowing.
Okay, all right, very good. And I don't want to get in too much of the weeds, but I do want to ask this question. Are they required to go and pick up trash in front of the mowing, or just mow over it?
No, they're required to go pick up the trash before they mow it.
All right, great.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Thanks. Item thirteen is Consider Approval of an Agreement with Pinnacle Consulting Management Group, Inc., in an Amount of $106,950 for right-of-way acquisition services for the South Telephone Reconstruction and Whiting Project from Southwest Nineteenth Street to Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street.
Mayor and Council, as we're moving along with the telephone road project between Thirty-Fourth and Nineteenth, we're, we've had our meetings with all of the utility companies and have received their relocation plans. And so we're at a position where we can go ahead, with the exception of one, and we're still working with them. But this will allow us to go ahead and move forward with right-of-way acquisition. Pinnacle has been doing all of our work over the last years, and this is an ODOT proj, will be an ODOT project, and they do a lot of ODOT projects. There are twelve parcels that we will be acquiring some property from, along that property. So we would recommend approval of the contract with Pinnacle to move forward.
Okay, make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. This time, we're going to recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item fourteen is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve items A and B?
Second.
Had a motion for the approval. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item fifteen is Consider Resolution Number 27025, adopting the schedule of fees and charges effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, the repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Make a motion. We table this item, so. Sorry.
That's what I was going to announce, yes.
Okay, we will ta, had a motion to table item fifteen. Okay, we will ta, had a motion to table item fifteen. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item's tabled. We will recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item sixteen is the consent docket. Make a motion to approve consent docket, A, B, and C.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Will you call the roll, please?
Sid Porter?
Here.
Melissa Hunt? Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Rob Clark?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here. Item eighteen is the consent docket.
Make a motion. We approve consent docket, item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene city council meeting.
Okay, the record could reflect that we're all still here. Item nineteen is new business. No one has signed up. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the council on anything? Item B is items from city council trustees. Anyone? Roads look good. Good job. Thanks, city employees, everybody.
Everybody's done a great job, and also, it's kind of sadness with this meeting because a longtime employee will be their first or their last official meeting to attend. Our fire chief, has been here many years. I believe this will be his last council meeting in his official capacity.
Boom.
Still, please come up and enjoy it and be with family and friends up here, but appreciate the many years. And I know there'll be more on that later, but I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, congratulations. And two, I would just, just echo the, the words of, of thanks to our police, fire, emergency responders, dispatchers, and then I'll, I'm gonna leave people out. I don't intend to, and our Public Works, spread over five-hundred-and-fifty tons of salt, sand, mix, and over fifty-five-hundred gallons of brine on our roadways, and they've been out every day just doing all they can to make sure our city roads are as safe as they can be, and it is appreciated. And I want to say thank you as well. With that, items from the city trust manager.
Thank you, mayor. Would like to echo Councilman Porter's statement congratulating Chief Greg Herbster on thirty-five years with the City of Moore. Been a very successful career. I appreciate your service as fire chief. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I can remember when you first came to address the council as chief, you had a plan and you were enthusiastic about it, and you put it in place, and you took what was already a good department and made it much better, and it's poised for continued growth and success. Thank you for everything you've done for the City of Moore.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. And that's kind of all we got for you is just thanks. It would be a handshake or something, but maybe later. Anyways, item twenty is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions, and it's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, discuss, considering if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding pending case number CJ dash twenty twenty-five dash eighty-nine filed in Cleveland County Court by Jason Liddell on behalf of Joshua Stew against the City of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B four.
Make a motion. We convene to executive session.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we'll convene to executive session. Okay, we are reconvened from executive session. Again, just let the record reflect all members that are, were present are still present, and item D is the action. I make a motion that we proceed as directed on item twenty A.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes, and twenty-one is adjourned.
So move?
Second. Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for being out here tonight.